Everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for November 19th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that everybody in the room either turn off or mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. And I've asked trustee Collet Archie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rob, would you like to check quorum?
Certainly. December 3rd, regular meeting. All look okay. December 10th, study session.
I will not be here for that.
Okay, Chris is out. And then December 17th. Okay.
I'm going to see an evening with Julie Andrews.
For you.
I had to give it up for my wife, you know.
She's still?
Big fan.
She's still around?
Evidently. I'm going to the Chicago Theater on December 10th, so, anyway, I'm sure that the rest of you will forge on without me.
Who's gonna be president, and you're asking?
Andy.
Oh.
Do you want to do it?
No, I think it's too bad.
It looks so easy when you're sitting over there, I know. Okay, public comment. This is the time of the evening where anyone in the room is welcome to come to the podium and share your thoughts with us on any item that is not on the agenda. So I'd like to open up the public comment, and it looks like Julie would like to speak with us. Hi, Julie. Well, yeah, because otherwise.
Oh, is that better? Oh, yes, that's much better. Do you want me to start from the beginning?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. So, I've had a situation with illuminated sign that I put in my store. I got this small sign that says "Open" because many customers complained that they couldn't tell that the store was open because it's so dark and because the parking is so dense, everyone's angle parking on Lincoln. And we don't have a lot of additional street lighting on Lincoln like they now have on Chestnut, which is quite lovely. So I've noticed that people are just more sensitive to signs that are lit up. We used to have a number of signs that weren't lit up and they worked, but nowadays, things have changed with the introduction of an iPhone, which is illuminated in 2007, and the introduction of an iPad in 2012. We've been staring at illuminated devices every day, all day long. And so when you look at something that's not illuminated, you just don't see it anymore. I don't know when the village decided to change the exit signs, but the exit signs are now illuminated. When I first had an exit sign in a store, it wasn't. But now it is, because we want people to see the way out if there's an emergency. And we want them to see a way in. When there's no business on our streets and no stores are thriving, we want to have a small, little iconic symbol that they know to park their car and come in and not go home and buy it online. So I'm worried about the businesses. I'm worried about all the businesses. And I think that we need to revisit the ordinance that we have that says there can be no illuminated signs. Maybe there's a way to come up with a solution, to have some kind of small illuminated item. I actually have illuminated piece of jewelry, which is new this year. So, you know, we're just looking at more things that light up these days. And I think we want to keep our retail stores, and in order to keep them, we have to consider allowing maybe a small sign that lights up, that isn't garish and isn't taking away from the beauty of the village, the village I also live in. I did get in trouble for the sign I have, so I've left it off recently, but when they cited me, they called it a neon sign. When I looked at the ordinance, it said internally illuminated sign. I must point out, there are television screens in many windows of stores that are used as signage, and they're illuminated internally as well. So something with the ordinance might have to get adjusted in order to bring it up to date, to the fact that we are looking at things that light up now instead of things that don't light up. And I do have pictures, if you want me to pass them out, to kind of give you some ideas of what my sign looks like if it's not lit up, what it looks like if it is lit up. And also, I went to Evanston, and even the library has a teeny little book up high that says "Open," so they know that that little branch of the library is open and that they can park their car and come in. Okay, I thank you.
Yeah, let's see them.
Yep. So they're not huge. The first one, should I just pass?
Yeah.
Here's the first one. And it shows neon. That's actually my storefront windows. The side window has a little open sign at the bottom. It would be better if it was higher, because if there's a parked car, they can't see it as well. But if it was up in a top corner, it would be easier for customers to see that the store is open and they could come in. And then I took some at night, too. My printer's starting to fail on me, but it gives you ideas. There's the exit sign, and there is the open sign that's in the front window that is not illuminated yet. Here's more illuminated. With the big red statue behind it, which is, it's called Helper. It's made by an artist. And then I have a couple from Evanston, and then I have one that's inside the building that's a beautiful rainbow-colored Beet Street sign that would not be acceptable to the village, so I put it inside. This is the one that's really quite large but gorgeous. And then these are some examples of the Evanston's line of signs. So about that lush sign, that's animated. That lush sign is a new wine and restaurant in Evanston that's illuminated, also animated as well. They blink. And I didn't ever have mine blink, but I think the blinking might cause someone to have a seizure or something.
Julie, was there a problem with this?
Well, that's way inside on a wall where you can't see it from the street, so there's no problem with it, but nobody can see it unless they're in the hallway.
But this isn't the, it's this little open?
It's the little open sign, right. I mean, the Beet Street sign that's inside the building, in most communities, would be on the outside of the storefront, but not in Winnetka because we don't allow light-up billboard-type signs. I actually got that from a store that I was working with in Arlington Heights. They had it on the outside of the building, but then when they closed, instead of discarding it, I said, "I'll take it, and I'll just put it inside so that it won't be in violation." Any questions about?
No, thanks for the information. I think there is something we should look at, because I like your analogy of your open sign versus the TVs we see. That's a great analogy, and it's something maybe David can work out with the billing department and design review board and maybe modify something or keep it as an as-conditioned basis.
Are the televisions okay that are in the windows?
Well, I see your point. It's illuminated.
Yeah.
Just happens to be a TV.
I think the open sign is far less awful than the television, personally. And I think a small, little open sign should be okay with our community at this point. And I would love to see the ordinance re-looked at, just in general, because I, for one, am one person that doesn't like to shop online, but if everything blows up and drives up, blows away, there's nothing that we're gonna have left.
Especially like an open sign.
Right.
I request you probably wouldn't have a close sign that's open, lit up all night.
No, no. We just turn it off and we're gone, right.
So it's a couple hours a day.
Um, how long?
I'll tell you what, maybe, David, could you explain to us what the rule is, as far as this lighted sign thing?
Sure.
Because to be honest with you, I've been ignorant of it.
Yeah, so the village does allow some types of illumination. We don't allow internally illuminated signs, and at some point in time, the village decided not to allow those. So those would be a neon sign, it would be, you'd often see them as signs, either a box sign that's internally illuminated and then glows from the inside. You could see them as internally illuminated signs. They'd be individual signs, but there'd be a light inside of it, and then the front panel would glow from the light. So we don't allow that. We do allow externally illuminated lights, so signs that are illuminated by a fixture shining on the light. And then also, we do allow what's called halo lighting. Core Power Yoga is an example. If you can picture it, I'm trying to think of some others.
What's it called?
The Shade Store, Core Power Yoga.
No, no, that mean the type of lighting?
A halo. And it's, it lights the wall behind the letter. It doesn't illuminate from inside.
Oh, oh, right, okay.
So that's currently the regulations. And in terms of a window sign, it's considered a window sign once it's within five feet of the window, so someone could have a sign back more than five feet illuminated from the window, and our window sign regulations don't apply to that. I'm sorry, I can't think of where in Winnetka we have TVs in the windows.
The cabinet place, I believe.
Yeah, right.
Up by Hubbard Woods.
Which optical store, the one?
Optique.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, did somebody say there was one of the Realtor offices?
Compass.
Yeah.
But it's green, but it just says Compass.
Do we know, do we know the last time that the DRB or anybody took a look at our regulations for signage?
Yeah.
I mean, it may be, it may be time just to look at it, and I mean, things change over time.
Our sign regulations need a thorough review in themselves. It was something we were waiting until after the comprehensive plan was done, to see what input we got through that process. But in terms of, if you want us to focus just on internally illuminated signs at this point in time and whether to consider them, the sign regulation rewrite, as Peter will be able to explain, given a fairly recent U.S. Supreme Court case, there are some things we should be looking at our sign regulations about, but it limits in terms of how we can regulate signs.
And this regulation is not unique to Winnetka?
No, oh, no.
The classic, the classic case is you look at a Walgreens.
Right.
They purposely put the glass in front, three or four feet behind, they got their big Walgreens sign.
Yeah.
Because it's not considered signage if it's inside the building, of certain amount of feedback. But I agree, with different technology and things, that should be looked at.
Would it, would it be, would it really not make sense to look at this before the comprehensive plan is done, or could it be done?
I mean, if you like.
Well, what I'd like to do is, you know, number one, I think it might be good to, you know, at least get an opinion from DRB, you know, and then we can schedule up a study session. Julie, I'll make sure you get invited to that, you know, so we can kind of knock it around, and maybe that'll be something that, you know, the folks that are working on the comp plan can look at and integrate as part of, you know, because there's gonna be a lot of suggested modifications to codes and things like that that comes out of the comp plan exercise. But maybe the DRB can start talking about this as one of those points. And if it, if there seems to be some solid direction that we need to look at it, then we, then we go to study session on it and maybe move it up, move it along a little quicker.
In the meantime, how do you think we could possibly help out, Julie?
So we received a couple of complaints recently regarding specific internally illuminated signs. This was one of them. There were four other businesses which we had approached. They have come into compliance with the sign regulations. So in terms of, at this point, the ordinance is written such that she would need to comply. If you give us direction to work on an amendment, we can work on that.
Okay. So, so I understand the rule now, if she put a flat sign that says "Open" and put a?
Spotlight on it.
Spotlight or flashlight on that sign, that's okay? Inside the building?
Yeah, because it's not internally lit.
Not internally, yeah, I guess she could.
Right, so maybe a small LED light you have to, well, it's just cheaper than anything else. Yeah, and just shining on a sign that says "Open." I mean, I'm just trying to help out the situation currently.
What's really strange was when they cited me, they named it neon, because it is neon.
Right.
But of course, the ordinance is better language than the letters.
Yeah, the reason why they probably said neon, not knowing who wrote it.
Yeah.
Because it looks like the individual letters are like, like a neon look.
It's made to look red.
Right, exactly. Right, that's, I'm sure that's the accent.
They're LEDs, so they don't look.
Yeah, it was more the.
Should've been neon look sign.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there, is there a fine with that citation?
No, there was no fine issued. We issued a letter, several letters, seeking compliance, and then she turned off the sign, and so we hadn't gotten to the point of writing a citation.
Okay, well, I think we should at least have our duly-appointed taste police start having a conversation on it with DRB, and maybe they can provide us with a brief advisory statement on what their thoughts are, and then we can sit down and have a study session on it. I'm saying, you know, Julie, nothing moves fast here, I'm sorry. It's just the way it is.
And that's why I'm saying, you know, there's an intermittent way that.
And then I can move it back further in the store and leave it on.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I mean, it's just that.
Five feet.
They want to park, and they want to make sure you're.
Right.
Look, and you're talking to somebody who loves nighttime illumination, so I.
Well, I mean, I'm glad you brought the issue forward, because obviously, things have changed and it's time to look at it, so this is good.
Thanks.
It looked like it was written in 98 and possibly revised in 2002. But again, the iPhone came out, and it was stuck.
We're in the Dark Ages, literally.
I haven't played since this was written.
And one more piece of good news is it's sooner or later, and hopefully sooner, Lincoln will enjoy the same lighting that we currently have on Chestnut, so that'll help things a little bit, too. So it's, it's in the pipeline as part of the overall streetscape plan, so. But thanks for coming out, I really appreciate it. Would anybody else like to address council on a non-agenda item? Come on up.
This is a quick question. My name's Michael Flanagan. I go to Loyola. So the route that I take to school every day is through Winnetka Avenue, so I take Hibbert, and then I turn on Winnetka. And I was just wondering, when, I don't know if this is in your jurisdiction or Northfields, but when will the construction on the bridge be over? Because it's, the traffic light's a little slow, I guess, so it's kind of hard to.
Not soon enough.
Do you know what's going on over there? It's not in our jurisdiction. I believe it's a county project, but we can find out for it. If you want to leave your name and number, we can give you a call.
Okay, yeah.
If you want to leave it with Tim, I can sort of get in touch with you.
And I think you're only doing half the bridge at a time.
Yeah.
So however long it's been, it's probably that much more.
They're on, they're on the second half.
Oh, they're on the second half, okay, all right.
Yeah, so that's the good news.
Is it a complicated bridge? No. It's county, it's not even that. Thanks for, thanks for asking.
Anybody else? We're on a roll. And that's it. All right, I will now close the public comment session, and we'll move on with reports. First trustees, we'll start with Jack. Any report this month or this week? Andy?
No report.
No report.
Bob?
Nope.
Anne?
We're just chatting.
I noticed.
We were talking about Winnetka stores.
Any report?
No, no. Chris did shopping in Winnetka, that's not a report. That's actually true.
Okay. Village attorney?
No report tonight.
Village manager?
No report this evening.
And village president, I have a couple things. It was pointed out to me a little earlier today that, some interesting news. This is from NBC 5, and the headline is, "Winnetka Named Best Suburb in Illinois According to New Ranking." According to a new ranking, one Chicago suburb can lay claim to the title of best suburb in the state of Illinois. The ranking compiled by the publication 24/7 Wall Street ranked North Suburb in Winnetka as the best suburb to live in. This ranking, published this week, identifies the best suburb in every state. So it's quite an accomplishment, you know?
Okay, come on.
It's something to be proud of. I mean, really. And I would concur that we are definitely the best suburb to live in.
You're gonna stir stuff up with Glencoe again.
Don't start, Andy, please. Okay. And also, just a quick update on stormwater. We're into deep negotiations with both District 36 and the Winnetka Park District. As was the case with Nutria, there's a lot of complex and complex issues surrounding these intergovernmental agreements. And while we have, I think, fundamental agreement on business terms with both groups, there's still a lot of language that needs to be worked out amongst the attorneys relative to the various components of the easements and the extent of the other pieces of the agreement that are non-business related. So they're working, and hopefully, very soon, we'll be able to roll those out in public, and so stay tuned on that as well. And that's all I had. Oh, and when's the tree lighting again, Bob?
First Friday in December, the six.
December 6th. So everybody just put that on your calendar, December 6th is the tree lighting. We've moved to Dwyer Park where we planted a brand-new blue spruce, and it'll be. That's a good question.
The holiday market starts happening around four, and then the tree lighting will be at 6:15, but it's started together around six.
Right, so there's the holiday market, which will be out in the, in the back of the post office parking lot there, and if it's anything like it has been the last couple of years, it'll be a well-attended event and a lot of fun, too. And I think it really, it's nice to bring everybody together as a community, and the kids seem to have a great time with it. And Santa will be showing up on the fire truck as well, so something to look forward to. Okay, item number six, approval of the agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. I will now ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Approval of the village council meeting minutes for the October 29th, 2019 budget meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated November 1st through the 14th, 2019, in the amount of $1,090,742.77. Resolution number R 85, 2019, appointing the village treasurer for adoption.
Great, thank you, Rob. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Collet Archie?
Aye.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfair?
Motion carries, thank you. Item number eight, ordinances and resolutions. Eight A, public hearing, fiscal year 2020 village budget. A public hearing on the fiscal, on the budget for the fiscal year 2020 has been advertised for tonight's meeting. The village council discussed the proposed budget at a public meeting in October and will take public comment tonight. The public hearing on the proposed budget is now open. And our finance director, Tim Sloth, is here to summarize. Tim, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. Per the Budget Act, which the village functions, the annual budget must be adopted before commencement of the fiscal year. As part of that process, under section 8-2-9 of the Illinois Municipal Code, we are to hold a public hearing on the proposed budget. We published a notice of tonight's hearing on November 7th in the Winnetka Talk. A detailed copy of the budget has been posted online and is available at the library as well. And the village council held an all-day public review meeting on the budget on October 29th. And it included in the board package is a summary of the broader questions that were raised at the review meeting, including, per council's request, a budget transmittal message was sent to the community on November 14th. The proposed budget now includes $15,000 in engineering services dedicated to the Green Bay Trail. Included in the current five-year plan are $1.5 million in projects that in previous years would have been earmarked to the general fund, and in future years, it could be an additional $2.7 million available in MFT funding for road and bridge projects going forward. In the stormwater fund, during the budget review, we acknowledged having, anticipating having in-depth financial conversations in the first half of 2020 with current funds on hand sufficient to complete the projects identified for 2020. So with that, I just wanted to hit on a few key facts in regards to the budget as a whole. First and foremost, the 2020 budget is balanced, and for the sixth year in a row, there is no property tax increase proposed. All in, the budget totals $79,018,428, which represents an operating increase of 1.02%. The capital portion of the budget totals $18.5 million, provides funding for major capital initiatives, including $3.4 million in roadway, sidewalk, and bridge improvements, $7.5 million in stormwater infrastructure, $1.4 million towards revitalization of the business district, $400,000 in sanitary sewer infrastructure, $3.2 million in electric utility infrastructure, and $1.9 million in improvements to the drinking water system, including water main replacement. And finally, $445,000 towards vehicles, equipment replacement, and general investment in public facilities. Again, the budget is balanced, and the operating expenditures are fully funded by operating revenues. The operating budget does not rely on the use of fund balance or one-time revenue sources to fund operating expenses. As such, there are utility rate increases built into the budget, which will be discussed further when we introduce the rate ordinances. And we'll go into further the utility rates and the general rates when we introduce those ordinances. But overall, I just wanted to say it was a balanced budget, no property tax increases, and, you know, we're glad to get to this point.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Tim. All right, well, I'd like to open up the microphone for audience comments on the budget. Would anybody like to speak on the 2020, the fiscal year 2020 village budget? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it up here. Are there any comments, questions, or other discussions to be had on the budget up here?
Can I ask Tim for a little clarification on the MFT issue? So for the next five years, and I apologize that I didn't see the revised capital budget, it's probably online, I just didn't see it. Anyway, so for the next five years, there's $1.5 million that had previously been committed to projects from the general fund, now is MFT financed over the next five years.
Correct, so in, we had already plugged in the MFT fund in the five-year capital plan that you reviewed, there were $1.5 million in projects in the MFT.
Okay.
That in previous capital plans would have normally been budgeted in the general fund.
Say that again?
That, so there's.
So the original budget that we reviewed on the 29th?
Included $1.5 million of capital items that were, would have previously been budgeted in the general fund. That would have been, so that was for things like parking lots and that, those type of things. We moved that to the motor fuel tax fund.
Right.
Versus the general fund.
Okay, but then.
And then, in the memo, we outlined that the motor fuel tax fund has a fund balance of approximately $3 million, and that we could, the current five-year plan in place, you know, draws that down, I think it was to about $2.7 million. So we could, in theory, dedicate about $2.7 million over the next five years towards additional roadway projects, based on their fund balance.
Okay, maybe I'm just reading this differently. It says $1.5 million in the MFT five-year capital investment plan, $1.5 million, da-da-da. At the end of the five-year plan, there's approximately $3 million in funds on hand. In future years, are you saying in future years after the five years?
The five-year, yes, the five-year plan. So when we get to next year's budget cycle and we're reviewing projects, we could at that time decide to deploy, you know, $2.7 million of that $3 million as we redo the five-year plan. So it's a five-year plan, but we look at it every single year, and we review it every single year. So the current five-year plan has, you know, the fund balance stable within the motor fuel tax fund. Part of that is the, the. Part of that is the recent MFT increase of 19 cents. We just got the first payment remittance a couple of months in regards to that. So, you know, to try and get a full understanding of exactly the amount of revenue that's going to be coming in, we didn't, we felt it prudent to kind of keep the fund balance at that level. But assuming it comes in as anticipated, we would project that, you know, at the end of the five years, we'd have the $3 million in fund balance. So when we get to the next year's planning cycle, we could determine, you know, how to appropriate those resources.
Okay, but for the current plan, you felt that $1.5 million was the right adjustment?
Yes, we had, in our internal planning, there was $1.5 million of projects that were in the general fund that we were planning to propose to the board in the general fund that we ended up moving towards to the motor fuel tax fund.
Looking, beginning with the 2021 budget, most likely, we'd be looking at additional general road program expenses that are programmed in the general fund, a greater percentage of that being programmed in MFT.
Right, so in years that are currently in this capital budget, 2022, '23 could be increased
Correct.
in terms of funding from the MFT.
Yes, which takes less pressure off the general fund for other capital.
Okay, I read it differently, but I understand that, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Any other comments, questions, or...
No, thanks for a great presentation on your budget day.
Thank you.
Today's follow-up, it's, I think, going forward, always try to keep that to one-day process. The second year's been done, it's a good process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think...
I think Josie did a nice job on that letter, too. I'm sure that there was a lot of collaboration over there and here and so on, but I thought the letter came out very clear. If I was just reading that completely uninformed, I'd have a sense of what we're doing here, which is, I think, you know, important for the community to see that.
And for those folks that are unaware of the process, is the budget and the capital plan this year were 532 pages. And the folks up here in the dais took the time to review, literally touch every single page in that budget, and then spent the better part of eight hours at the table down here discussing all the components of it and debating it in some cases, and really thoroughly putting staff through their paces to make sure that the budget was responsible and something that we could feel good about. So, and staff did an amazing job. I mean, people don't understand. But this is what our staff produces to show us how they're going to spend our tax money every year. And I've seen other municipalities and the sort of documents that their elected officials work off of, and it is nothing like this with respect to detailed organization and narrative that helps you understand exactly what's going on. So just an awesome job by Rob, by you, and the whole gang that works on this. And now I understand why you have to start in, what, August?
Oh, gosh, July.
Because this doesn't happen overnight, folks. And I know there's a lot of internal push and pull before we even get a look at it. So just a tremendous job, I'm really impressed. And this year was, you know, the conversation was good and everybody came ready. And we did get fed twice during the day, which was good, too, so...
Keep that blood sugar up. But Chris, I would add to that, that, you know, for us as a council, I mean, it's a time-consuming process in that it takes time to review the documents. But as an exercise for us, it's relatively easy because the staff has, I mean, they have really internalized the financial philosophy that the village has had for years of prudence and responsibility. And I just, I want to thank the staff again for being extraordinarily thoughtful and careful in the budgeting process because, believe me, you know, it's, I mean, it is a pleasure to go through and hear the presentations. And then, as we go through the year, I mean, the amount of adjustments that we have to do because things came in, you know, over budget or something happened. You know, you all have those contingencies built in, and we usually, you know, end with a surplus at the end of the year because of your careful planning. So I really want our community to know that this is, you know, and it's not something new, it's been going on for a long time. And so we're really grateful, so thank you.
Yeah, I want to say thanks to Rob and everyone as well for recognizing how important it is to maintain the line on taxes. Every year that we don't raise taxes, this town gets slightly more affordable. And, you know, this award recognizing Winnetka, you know, people should take note. It's not just a pretty place to live, it's a place that takes its responsibility to the people that live here very seriously. And we recognize the cost of living in Illinois in general is very difficult. And Illinois is sort of bucking against, or Winnetka is sort of bucking against that trend, and that's something we should be proud of. And at the same time, we're not doing it at the expense of the long-term investments we need to be making, whether it's in the water mains, or stormwater, or whatever else. So this is a town people should really have on their radar if they're worried about, you know, where their tax dollars are going, this is a good place to be.
Lot of value. Any other comments?
I don't want to prolong it, but I have to say, this is a great process. And Tim, thank you so much, and Rob, and Chris.
I don't do anything except, I won't say what I do. All right, well, if there's no other comments, I'll move forward here. A lot of alphabet soup to go through. So item one under this item is Resolution Number R 86, 2019, a resolution adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020 and ending December 31, 2020 for introduction. May I have a motion to introduce Resolution Number R 86, 2019?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Resolution Number R 87, 2019, utility and rate fees. This is up for introduction. Tim, do you have anything to say on this, or do we just keep on rolling?
We can just keep on rolling up here.
Okay. May I have a motion to introduce Resolution Number R 87, 2019?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Number R 88, 2019, general fees. This is for introduction, may I have a motion to introduce Resolution Number R 88, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, I didn't hear anything over here, guys. Property tax levy and abatement ordinances. This is, this next set of ordinances set the village's 2019 property tax levy and also abate taxes on the Series 2013 and 2014 general obligation bonds. Tim, you want to go ahead and give us a little outline on this?
Sure. For the property taxes, the total property tax levy is $15,47,473. The typical homeowner will see property taxes paid to the village remain unchanged. And in staying consistent with prior years, new development, which is incorporated into this levy, is estimated at $208,488, or 1.405%. The property tax is the major funding source for the village's general fund and accounts for over 50% of the revenue in this fund. The general fund is the village's main operating fund and is a primary funding source for major village services, including police, fire, maintenance of village streets, snowpiling, economic development, that sort of thing. It should also be noted that the village, while not obligated, has maintained tax levies since 2004 that have been less than the state tax cap laws. So this year's levy is under by a total of little over $2 million. And cumulatively, since 2004, we have a levy $10.3 million less than the tax cap. The tax levy also includes a levy for Special Service Area 3. This levy was used to make roadway improvements to trap lane and is only paid by residents who reside within the limits of the Special Service Area. And then finally, in regards to the abatement ordinances, the village issued two series of GO bonds back in 2013 and 2014, and we're abating the property tax levy on the bonds and continue to use existing stormwater utility fund revenues collected to pay these obligations.
Any questions for Tim on these? Hearing none, we'll keep on rolling. Okay, ordinance number M 18, 2019, an ordinance levying taxes for the year 2019. This is for introduction, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number M 18, 2019?
I have one quick question.
Yep.
Shouldn't there be any public input on these, or no? Or am I just not thinking?
Okay, is there any public comment on this? Hearing none, we'll bring it back up here. Any more comments from the council? We have a, we have a motion in a second, so that's a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number M 19, 2019, an ordinance levying taxes for the year 2019 for Village of Winnetka, Cook County, Illinois, Special Service Area Number 3. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number M 19, 2019?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number M 20, 2019, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2018, excuse me, to pay the principal of an interest on a $9 million general obligation bond, Series 2013, of the Village of Winnetka, Cook County, Illinois. For introduction. No.
No.
It's in arrears. It's levied, it's the tax heretofore levied. This says 2018. Oh, so we had a typo, so let me go back again. And the longest one. Good grab, Penny. Ordinance number M 20, 2019, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2019 to pay the principal of an interest on $9 million general obligation bond, Series 2013, of the Village of Winnetka, Cook County, Illinois. For introduction, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number M 20, 2019?
So moved.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Hopefully, we're almost done. Okay. Ordinance number M 20, 21, 2019, an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2019 to pay the principal of an interest on $7.5 million general obligation bond, Series 2014, of the Village of Winnetka, Cook County, Illinois. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number M 21, 2019?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have ordinance number M 22, 2019, amending a special use ordinance for a parking lot at 454 to 462 Winnetka Avenue. Just going to keep it on rolling. The village has received an application to amend a special use permit to allow the leasing of parking spaces to non-tenant and tenant affiliates, which is prohibited under the current permit. Here to review is Community Development Director David Shown, and David?
Yeah, just quickly to review the request, the project, the site is on Winnetka Avenue. It's a mixed-use project. It includes commercial on the first floor and residential up above. As President Rent said, the current special use prohibits the renting of parking spaces to non-tenants or tenant affiliates. The applicant was made aware of this requirement after we received a complaint from a tenant of the building saying that non-tenants were able to lease parking spaces. And so the applicant had the option to either cease leasing the spaces or request the amendment, and he's requested the amendment. The original request included the ability to lease 16 parking spaces to non-tenants or tenant affiliates. After reviewing the application materials, listening to the applicant's testimony, and hearing from one member of the public that spoke in favor of the request, the ZBA determined that it could support 12 spaces being leased out. They felt that the applicant had demonstrated that the demand for parking by the tenants of the building would allow some spaces to be rented to non-tenants, which is predominantly Nutria students, and that the applicant had indicated that the leases allowed him to terminate them with a 30-day notice so that if he needed parking spaces for tenants of the building, that he would be able to do that. The applicant agreed to that recommendation. Also at the meeting, the applicant noted that there were a couple of more parking spaces that had been striped on the site than with the approved plans. Between the ZBA meeting and the Plan Commission meeting, staff reviewed them. One of the spaces is in a drive aisle, so that would need to be removed. That's space A, and then space B could remain, but it would need to be labeled as a compact space, given its length. So this amended request showing 12 spaces to be leased was presented to the Plan Commission. In the end, both bodies unanimously recommended approval of the request to lease 12 parking spaces to non-tenants or tenant affiliates. And the Plan Commission's recommendation was conditioned on them adjusting those two spaces, the additional spaces, and that the condition also that they provide this 30-day lease termination clause in the leases, which the applicant said he does and agrees to. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the recommendations of the two advisory bodies.
Any questions for David?
I have some questions about the original variation that was granted in, whatever that was, 2001? Yeah. And the number of parking spaces that were proposed to be installed, that was, that, you know, that improvement was based on what need? Was it based on the developer wanting more parking spaces for tenants? Or was it because that was the number of spaces that was required by ordinance? Or what was the basis of that improvement?
Because the applicant wanted to provide more parking spaces.
So then, there's no, I mean, that was all, that was all green space that was turned into, you know, paved over. So now there is no more green space left on that piece of property, right?
Well, I think some of the area was gravelled area.
Well, I mean, originally, there was a big yard back there, right? I mean, there was, there was a nice green space for, and then, then there was a request for parking. So there was absolutely, they requested to pave over everything, right?
They requested to put in more parking.
Right, and so now there's no green space at all, and they have too much parking.
The commission and the ZBA found that, given how they have things structured, that there was the ability for them to lease parking spaces as long as they had a clause in the leases to allow them to terminate them. Because not all of the office spaces currently leased.
So the number of spaces that were put in was based on what measure? Was it, was it...
What they could fit on the site.
So that was what they wanted, was the number that they could fit on the site? Okay, thank you. So it wasn't our, it wasn't our requirement in terms of the number of parking spaces per unit or commercial space?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so then there's a surplus on that, on that site?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was, I just wanted to be sure I was right on that. Thank you.
How will it be determined when they need additional spaces for the building and then to terminate the leases? Are we involved at the village, or how is that handled?
It would be left to the applicant to handle. I guess we would become involved if we received a complaint that there wasn't adequate parking on-site for the tenants of the building. Then we would get involved and say, you need to provide parking for those tenants.
So I guess in the ordinance as drafted, does it have that language to give us that ability if we need to get on the enforcement side?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for David? Like to open it up to the...
Are we going to hear from the applicant?
To the audience, well, yeah, would the applicant like to address the council? Come on up. Come on up.
Thanks.
How much of parking space is going over there?
Depends who's paying. The students are-- The ones with the deep pockets. Before we get to this matter, I just wanted to thank you and to tell you that I've been in Winnetka for two years now after managing real estate in Chicago. And I just want to express what my gratitude and what a pleasure it is to deal with. The fire department, the utility company, the scavengers, it's, they're really heaven-sent. The only thing I wish is that we had people like you running our county and our state.
No, thank you.
You don't want to go to prison.
FYI--
Can we get that on film?
A property increase of, a property tax increase of 100%. Put a damper on, on, on my positivity. And so, it's the building. And the other thing is, I'm having problems running the offices, which I was aware of even when I bought the building. The previous owner told me, "I've tried everything, I just can't do it." And we've got about 40% of our offices empty. And hence, the reason for, for renting these parking spaces because they're just empty. And there are students who are willing to pay for or a space just a block away from school. And I haven't encountered any problems whatsoever. I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give myself the headache of renting more than the property can afford to, to take.
So, great, well, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Actually, I have a couple of questions. Sorry. What, just as we're thinking about our development of our commercial spaces and stuff, what, what problems are you running into? And why are those commercial spaces not leasable? I know there's, people say there's a demand for office space, so--
Yeah, well, you know, originally, this is a huge drugstore from what I hear prior to 2001. And then, they decided that maximize utilization by making 200 square foot offices. But there's, I, I don't know what the reason is, really.
I mean, is it, is it what, the, the size of the offices? I mean, you know, are you getting any inquiries?
From 150 square feet to 200. And then, most of the tenants are tenants who occupy three or four spaces. So, I've only got maybe seven tenants while there are 27 offices. And seven of those tenants occupy either two or three offices.
So, then, so then, then how much space is vacant?
I'd say there are around nine empty offices now out of 27.
Nine out of 27.
Right.
And relative, and most of those don't, there doesn't seem to be much use of the parking, then?
No, no, one and then, because most of them don't have clients. They're either investment brokers or an attorney. Anyhow, most of the people just do business while they're in the office through the phone and internet instead of having clients come in. But I offer each tenant a parking for them and a pass for a visitor.
Gotcha, and then, for your residents, there are--
Residents are all entitled to one space with a $50 per month fee.
And then, how many, what, how many residential units are there?
There are 25 apartments, 27 offices, and a total of 41 parking spaces.
And then, you said, I mean, I read that not all of the tenants use, have cars? Is that right?
No, no, I'd say about half of them have cars.
And so, that's really interesting because we've been talking about transit-oriented development or what, you know, what's the demand. So, so they pay 50, and then, how much, what, what's, what's the going rate for student parking?
Students, well, this year, from 25 to 3,000, 2,500 to 3,000 per year.
Per year, so that's for a nine-month?
Yeah, and I heard I can get more.
Wow.
They usually, obviously, it's their parents paying, and they want their kids to be close to school. It's really convenient for them, and it really is a safe environment for the kids. They don't create chaos in the streets, and the kids are relative, very nice. I haven't had problems with them.
Okay, all right, okay.
We're down to 12, 12 spots--
Correct.
--at this point with the adjustments that, that were made.
Right.
And you're reasonably satisfied with that?
Yeah, I didn't want to get too greedy. I was fine.
Right, okay.
And then, how many vacant spaces do you have on a daily basis for, that are allotted for your building?
I'd guess around seven or eight currently, even with the students and offices and residential. Granted, I've got eight empty offices and two empty apartments currently.
Right. You know, so the only, the only question I'm asking is relative to, you know, trying to balance out so that if you have a new tenant come in, wants a car, or somebody gets a car, you know, how, how do you handle that? If your demand for your space, it would take, what, 30 days to, you know, kick a student out if you're, if you found that, you know, suddenly, you, you did have a demand?
Yeah, but I truly, I don't think that's ever going to happen. We've got two empty apartments, and like I said, eight or nine empty spaces at full capacity.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is around 10 o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
So, I don't think that'll be a problem. But yes, I would give a student one month's notice and then refund the prorated share of what they paid me for the year.
Okay.
Are you able to get any sense of a business or businesses that may be able to go into the first floor of your building and maybe market to the new cheer students?
I'm sorry, Jack, I'm not sure if I answered the question.
I, it used to be White's Drug Store.
Right.
It used to get constant business in and out from the new cheer students and the neighbors.
Right.
And it's been empty since 2001. Is there, not empty, but not with retail kind of a business on that building. Is there any chance, do you foresee any use of that first floor for retail?
No, I, I can see adding plumbing to each of the offices and then having perhaps a doctor or dentist come in. Other than that, I really don't see what else can be done.
Is it just the, the space is no good at the first floor? I mean, the ground floor is what I mean.
Right, I really wish I knew what the solution was. I've contacted insurance agencies and it, I've had a few doctors call and say, "I want four or five spaces, but I need water." And I said, "Well, I don't have it."
It's a tough place to, to rent, given the fact that you've got a massive population of teenagers coming and going every day and the traffic congestion. It's usually right at rush hour time as well. I mean, it's just, you know, the days of the pharmacy being there kind of just, that was what that building was for, right? And when that went away, obviously, they tried what they could. I mean, carving it up into little offices probably made some sense, but obviously, there wasn't even a big market for that, or hasn't been. Correct.
I'd just love to see a way to find some kind of retail that can get into Indian Hill to, to enrich, to, to, to make it a little bit healthier. Or a retail, fast food service. Yeah, well, I mean, around the corner, that's just sort of the thought with--
Well, there's Andy's favorite, it could be a weed shop.
There used to, there used to be one.
I'll be around if you have any suggestions.
Let's reel this back in. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Anybody like to speak on this? Hearing none. I'll bring it back up. Any other comments or discussion on this particular item?
I, I actually do have a question, and I kind of alluded to it earlier, is that, you know, the original purpose for the special use was to allow more parking for use to make the building viable. You know, I am troubled that there is absolutely no green space left on that lot. I mean, it's, it's paved, it's completely paved. And, you know, that flies in the face of what we want to have for our, you know, for our areas bordering, you know, residential and multi, multifamily. Not to say that, you know, we should put in the whole yard that was back there before, but I, I am a little troubled that we are continuing to grant extra spaces that are, you know, not, not being used for a commercial, commercial use. So, I, I, the situation under which the special use was granted is, is no longer viable. So, I don't know what that does, you know, if we have any obligation to return at least part of the landscape buffer.
And the way, the way I look at it, that original granting is still required when his building gets filled.
No.
So, if he leases his other offices and his vacant apartments, these temporary spaces are rented, are going to be used for his--
My understanding from David was that, given the requirements, that they even have more parking than is required.
Not, not, not if they fill the space.
No, so then, the number of spaces they have is based on, it, it does fulfill the requirement?
Well, back in 2001, the parking requirements were unique. And so, at that point, they weren't putting in the parking to meet a parking requirement. They were putting in the parking to provide additional parking.
Right, so, for example, under today's parking standards, are they, are they, what, how does their parking inventory match the space that they have?
Well, the current standard doesn't apply to them because they're not increasing, they're not increasing the intensity of the use. So, they don't have to provide additional parking now.
Right, right, so, I, you know, I mean, we are asked to grant a variation so that he can monetize the parking space, which was granted as a variation, you know, so that they could--
If I can clarify your question?
Yeah, please do, I'm obviously--
The existing offices and apartment structures, they're there. Current requirements for parking are how many stalls?
Well, there's--
Probably what they have already. Or no, that's the first question.
Correct, I mean, there's, our parking requirements are a little confusing, but there'd be no, there's no parking requirement for the commercial.
Okay.
And if we had to apply our current parking, they would not meet our current parking requirement.
They would not have enough.
Right, so--
But they have sufficient under their approvals, they have sufficient. But if they were building a new building, they wouldn't be providing--
All we're doing is helping him out to monetize the parking spaces when it's empty.
Well, but, but David, is--
Yeah.
The parking study, and I don't know where we're going on this, but the parking study shows that at full occupancy with, for the building, that there is excessive parking capacity, even at full capacity.
Yeah.
That kind of gets to your point, Penny, a little bit. If there's more parking, is, am I reading that right? I mean, there's more parking than is even needed if the building was full?
No.
No?
Correct, their parking study shows there would be excess parking.
At full occupancy.
Correct, and then, as, and then, during the ZBA and Plan Commission discussion, as the applicant described the operation, so their study assumed that it was going to be all off, that all the unoccupied office was going to be medical use, which has a higher impact. He, he isn't leasing to medical uses. He's has, having a challenge list leasing it to office uses. Also, in this day and age, a lot of people will have, you know, a solo attorney may have an office space, but does most of their work at home, but wants to meet clients at an office. So, a lot of the, part of the time it was represented, they're not even there, but they may be leasing space, and other tenants may be there more. But it was based upon the testimony that was presented. They felt comfortable that they could lease up to 12 spaces, and that if it became an issue, he had in his clause, in his leases, the ability to get spaces back for future tenants.
I think the only, I mean, the only objection that I had read in this material from the ZBA or Plan Commission was whether it should be eight spaces up to 12 spaces. I mean, that was sort of the, the spectrum. I mean, I, I think 12 is perfectly fine personally. But that seemed to be based on the parking study for full occupancy, that there was always, even at full capacity, there were eight or nine spaces. And that's what should be able to be leased, but he can work with 12, it seems fine.
And to clarify, the study is what the building believes that they need? Not the ordinance requirement?
Correct, that's right.
And the good news is, they're paying a stormwater tax than in previous.
Yeah, I may not, you know, there's, there's capacity here.
Penny, I don't think, I think that space, what they mark as parcel six, was originally a foundation for a train station.
No, there was a yard back there. There was, it was green space.
There was the, the, the space--
Behind, yeah, there was, there was green space. You can see there are sort of two lots there. And originally, I mean, you know, 20 years ago, it was green space back there. So, you know, it's transformed over time, I understand that. But, you know, the only, the question that wasn't asked is, you know, the condition for which the variation was requested originally, you know, it no longer holds, per se. And just asking if there's an obligation to return the landscape buffer. I'm just raising the question because it was never asked. So, I raise it, I raise, I raise the question because I feel it's a responsible thing to do.
Just, I, I think you guys are all talking about different points about the parking and sort of not really answering each other's question. I think David's answer to your question is that they would have too few spaces if they were on today's current regulations.
Yes, correct.
Right, so, that means that we wouldn't be returning it to green space in that situation.
Correct.
Right, even if there was no previous arrangement made. Yours is, how many spaces can he actually tolerate renting because he has to maintain his pool for his business? I think he's the best judge of that personally. So, the only other thing I would add in terms of green space is that I know fully two lots, two homes in Winnetka that are, have been or will be torn down to make these gigantic lots. And I feel like we have lots of green space in our community. And if in that one little spot we don't, I'm okay with it.
Well, I mean--
Because we need the revenue.
Right.
I mean, we're losing revenue when we chop houses down and when we stop commercial enterprise.
The only other question I would ask is, and I just want to be sure that by providing the opportunity to derive a lot of revenue from, from these parking spaces that we're not providing incentive to not rent the spaces in the building to promote vacancies. So, I think the economics were discussed by the Plan Commission. I just didn't see a verithoror answer that was actually written in the, in the minutes. So, I just wanted to raise that to be sure that that is correct.
Then he won't be able to rent it if he doesn't have the appropriate facilities for his renters?
Well, but I mean, you know, you can, we can, there's a lot of revenue that can be raised from, from, from the, the parking spaces. And just being sure that the amount of revenue that would come in would not be a disincentive to try and rent the office spaces. I don't think that there would be an issue there. But again, I'm just, it was a question that I felt that needed to be surfaced and asked.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big revenue issue. I mean, 3,000 spaces, $3,000 times 12 spaces?
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Well, I mean, that's a going right now, right, you know, I mean, what do I? Right, so, again.
That parcel.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and then, just one point, Penny, is back in 2001, it was already a gravel parking lot.
Yeah.
So, if there was green space that existed, it would have been before 2001. Because at that time, it was gravel, and they, the, this permit gave them permission to actually pave that, that section.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I just, I used to, I used to go to that building a lot. I had a friend who lived there, so I don't know what the exact year was where it was transformed. So, again, I'm just raising the questions because I felt it was a responsible thing to do.
Uh huh, I agree. Any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing that we have a little, I won't call it tension, but just concern, I'm not even going to talk about waiving introduction at this point, and that was an option that was provided to me, but I don't--
Can I recommend we do, adopt and?
Sure, if you want to.
Yeah, I like to make the motion to introduce and adopt.
Okay, we have a motion? I have a second.
Wave introduction, sorry.
Wave introduction, I need a roll call vote. That's what the ordinance has, yeah.
Okay, motion by Trustee Swark, second by Trustee Wedner. Trustee Swark?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfair?
You know, I'm going to be annoying just because I really, I know. You know what, I just, I, I have to tell you, I just, I'm not entirely comfortable I just, I, I have to tell you, I'm just, I'm not entirely comfortable with the whole notion of continuing. I mean, we have, we have our ordinance process for a reason, so I'm actually going to vote no. I'm just being a pain in the neck.
Is that called archie?
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Yeah.
All right, so, I told you I should have just passed it up, but we went ahead and did it anyway.
If they have some failures, it makes it look more legitimate.
Yeah, right, I, yeah, I just, I, you know, I, I think we...
Okay, so now, I, I need a, a motion to introduce ordinance number M-2219.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, and you will be on the agenda for the next meeting for adoption, December 3rd. Thank you.
Thanks, and again, I appreciate it. There was just a lot of technicalities, but, but, you know, so thank you very much.
Okay, moving along, item nine, old business, there is none this evening. Item 10, new business, there is none. Item 11, appointments, there is none. Close session, there is none. And item 13, adjournment, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned, thank you.